And after conference, we'll get to the next meeting. We'll start with Department Head Reports. Highway Department, Jay Havlin.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We've been trying to replace cans. We've been doing, after this last rain we've had, we've found a lot more than what we knew we had. So it's probably gonna have to happen. I might transfer some money out of something in local roads and street to get it down to cans so we can replace the cans. But we're, our grade all is still not, they haven't got, they found out what was the matter with it and they haven't got down to fix it yet. But we're using it the way it is as long as we can. But hopefully they'll get down there this week and fix it. And the bad thing is, you know how things come in threes? Well, we went to take tobacco out and it broke same day we took the grade all out. So we're waiting on parts for it too. It's just, the way things happens, it seems, just some mental fatigue on most of the stuff down there because some of the age of some of the stuff is just getting worse, getting weak. But we'll get it fixed and get it back together. And we got the mower out. He's been mowing, he's not mowing today. Yeah, he is mowing today. I do have him out there today. But he's got the area around Orange done and he's getting ready to move across the river to around Mount Zion and that, down in there, and then he'll move over around Everton and do that. And slowly working his way around the county. We've had a lot of mud on the roads and we're trying to deal with them. We've got some problems where we're gonna have to wait for our grade all to get back before it's working real good before we can do it. But if people will just bear with us, we'll get it eventually. That's all we can do. That's all I have.
Okay. Thanks, Jay.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Jay.
Man, it's Bill Gray.
Thank you, Jerry. How are you doing?
Good morning.
I put the bids for the roof in your box. I got one bid back from Smithers Roofing out of Indianapolis. And their bid was seventy-two thousand, this is on the cap on the jail. And Steve, the guy that's gonna do the concrete work for the steps, I got over him. He said it's gonna be probably June before he gets over here on the steps. But he gave me a rough estimate. He couldn't come down and look at it, he just gave me a bid on material labor. He's right at thirty-nine thousand, thirty-nine thousand, two seventy, two ninety-seven.
We're talking, we're talking about for the steps now?
No, we're talking about the cap on the jail. Yeah. Shumel's was low bid on that. They're at twenty-nine, four, twenty-one.
Give me that price again.
Um, Shumel?
No, the, uh, the people with the steps.
Thirty-five thousand. Okay, they're at thirty-nine, two ninety-seven.
What is, Smorale, is it?
Smorale, yes.
Smorale?
Yeah. And you need the Smithers, the other one?
No, I got that, seventy-two.
Okay.
So it is imperative we go ahead and get that done.
We, yeah, we don't wanna run that road. If it gets, we get in the rainy season and get that insulation underneath there, that new insulation wet, then we're gonna have to, we're gonna have major problems.
And Smorale was, was confident that was pretty close what his was gonna be.
Uh, the one you said, uh, he was at thirty-nine, two ninety-seven. Shumel was at twenty-nine.
Yeah, you said that was rough, but you, he was pretty confident it was gonna be close to that.
Yeah. Yeah, well, what he done is he gave me a, uh, material and labor, uh, what do we charge on square footage? And that's what it come up to.
Well, then I think, my recommendation would go ahead and contract with, with, uh...
Shumel.
Shumel.
Okay.
Means he has the low bid, go ahead and get that fixed. We gotta keep these buildings worked up and in good repair. Why did I take the motion, we approved the contract with Shumel.
Mr. President, I'm moved we accept the proposal, uh, contract offer for Shumel for twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars even.
Second.
Been moved to second, accept Shumel's proposal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Prose, motion taken.
Okay. I'll take care of it. Uh, the only other thing I have was, uh, simple place for now. Took care of all the problems we had here with their inspection where they said that stuff wasn't hooked up and the stuff that, that work that they should've had done. They're, uh, they got everything done except for the pressure valve. They're supposed to be here this week to hook it up. Everything will be done. The only thing I had, I'm sorry?
You're talking about the fire system?
Yeah, the fire alarm system here in the jail, or courthouse, I'm sorry. But they got everything taken care of. That they, on the inspection when they found me on all those things, that they had two of their, uh, contractors that bid jobs come down and go through the courthouse, make sure everything was done, it was supposed to have been done. The only thing they found was that pressure switch wasn't wired and they're coming down to wire it and take care of it. And the only thing that they found, actually in the inspection that was bad, is we've got a backflow preventer that's bad and a bid to fix that is five fifty-eight. And that's something that we, we've gotta keep, we got two and it's something we've gotta keep up.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, where were we at on our, on our elevator?
I talked to him yesterday. He's gonna try to get me a couple bids. One, to fix it to where it's gonna run, but he said he cannot guarantee it because of the age of the elevator. And the next bid he'll give me is one to, to make sure. But then again, he said even if they, excuse me, put all new parts on that thing, you still got, you still got an elevator with age on it. I mean, other than the tank and all that that they have to switch out. He's supposed to give me a bid to replace that jack and everything.
But what is he saying? He's, he's recommending we just put in a whole new elevator?
He says this, if you, if you, it's gonna nickel and dime you to death if we don't. Because if you fix one thing and you, you still got an old elevator, so...
Well, they fixed the shaft.
Yeah, the shaft.
Then the seal started.
Yeah, the shaft and the car and everything's been fixed. The slide guards on the car and the shaft. But again, with the shaft, what they done was they, they straightened it up. They couldn't take it out because I brought it to you with the problem with the backfill.
And, and what he's gonna do is take that out and put in a new?
Take it out, take the shaft completely out, re-drill the hole to make sure and then put...
So all the money we spent so far is, on that shaft is just wasted?
Yep. I mean, he can get it running. Everything they done on the shaft is all done and repaired. The only thing, that valve was leaking, I told you last time, that's why it's not running right now. And the other problem was the switch and it's, uh, it could, it could start a fire. That's something we need to really address.
It's a shame, something we really don't use much, but by being AD compliant, we gotta do it, we gotta fix it.
Uh, like I said, I talked to him yesterday. He said he could put that, uh, the switch on there to, uh, or the valve, I'm sorry, to keep it from leaking off and the elevator will work.
But by the next meeting, you should have the figures?
Yeah. I was hoping to have him by this meeting, but he was, he was on vacation for a week.
Okay.
So that's why I didn't get him.
Where were we looking at ballpark, Bill?
I don't know.
Fifty, sixty?
I don't know.
Like a hundred?
I mean, I, until he gives me a number, I have no idea.
When we looked at putting one in for where the freight elevator is in the jail, and that's been...
Right.
Over a decade ago, it, it would've been eighty thousand dollars then. But I realize they're, well, they're retrofitting, it would've retrofitted either way.
Right. So...
What else is waiting till we get the figure, the bill from there?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I told him. He's working on it now, so I'll make sure he's got it by next meeting. Make sure he's got it by then. I'll get him, he's got it before then.
You got the boiler situation?
Uh, we backed, we got the backup fixed the next day. And, um, I've got all the parts ordered for the main boiler. They're not in yet, but we're, we're running. So we're trying to hurry up on the parts so we can get it going. So we'll, we'll be okay. But we're okay right now.
Super.
There you go. And...
Thank you, sir. That's enough, isn't it?
Thank you, gentlemen. And I'll fix the clock after the meeting.
Thanks, Jerry.
Okay. County Attorney, Chris, what do you got first?
Um, well, nothing until, I think it's under, um, the contract with the Snyder Corporation. Debbie, are you gonna bring, are you bringing that up?
Uh, yeah.
And then, uh, the contract for the grant for the Indiana Hazard and Community Development Act, which is also gonna be in new business.
Okay, okay. Council Representative, we got anybody here from the council?
Can't see much.
EDG, Mr. Parker.
Frank? Been working with you. My name's Corrigan. It's the same. This name? Dan Parker. Nice to meet you. Barton, I think I know you. And you've got a card.
Chris, I don't wanna ignore you. I think we've met before at the, uh, County Council Meeting. Davey Carter there and we met in the same, same place there. Here in the car.
This is my first opportunity to, to speak to the Commissioners and, uh, thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to just give a, a real brief report. Don't wanna chew up a lot of time. Uh, just for the benefit of those of you who don't know me, uh, lifelong resident of Connersville. All, all my school, grade school, junior high, high school, nineteen sixty-eight CHS graduate. Married a local gal from Everton, the cutest girl in, in Everton I married. Uh, and, uh, the same year we graduated, nineteen sixty-eight. Four beautiful children, nine grandchildren, one great-grandson and one just ready to come here any day, just ready to be born. Every time the phone rings, I think it's, it's, he's arrived. So, uh, wife and I, uh, went, went to college out in Idaho, seventeen hundred, seventy-five miles away from Connersville. Uh, had a good experience out there, graduated from that college, came back to Connersville. About the time the custom van business started, got involved in the custom van business for about fifteen years. Very successful, uh, experience with, uh, that. Worked for H.H. Robertson for about two years, flying the Friendly Skies, flew all over the United States helping H.H. Robertson. And, uh, and then I went to work for Hillenbrand down in Batesville. Uh, worked the marketing department, uh, for Hillenbrand Industries at Batesville Casket Company. Had a, a good experience there, helped them achieve a lot of, uh, goals and, uh, got a lot of training, a lot of experience there that's helping me in this current role as Economic Development Director for Connersville and Fayette County. You'll notice one thing on that business card that I gave you. Nowhere on that business card do you see the words Fayette County. I'm gonna change that. I think that there's been too little emphasis on Fayette County. There's huge opportunities that, uh, I think that we've kind of ignored or just been too busy and I wanna fix that. I do wanna report to you a little bit on some things that are going on. Uh, and I've made this same statement to the County Council and to the City Council that, uh, because of the nature of the business and confidentiality agreements and the rules of confidentiality, I cannot, uh, reveal the names of these companies that are adding jobs or, uh, expanding. But there is some expansion that's coming to Connersville. And, uh, there's one that may look like somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty jobs. There's another one that's, uh, twenty. And then we discussed the one, and we can freely talk about the Alex Carroll, uh, organic farm that he's starting on the sixteen acres in the industrial park. And that's somewhere ten to twenty jobs at the beginning and then that should, uh, eventually grow to what he feels will be around a hundred jobs when he gets to the end of what he sees here in, in Connersville. Just in the last day or two, uh, the mayor and I went to the, a grand opening for Goodwill. I met with the executives and the, uh, CEO of Goodwill, James McClellan, uh, last night, just a delightful man, and their store is all filled. Uh, when Goodwill opens a store, they get the cream of the crop from all of their stores and bring it to the one that's opening. So that store is full of great merchandise. The mayor and I were up there this morning to greet the customers. They open the doors at seven o'clock and there was a big line of people. So that's, that's up and running and, and, uh, looks like it's gonna be very successful. There are people from all over to attend this, from, from Richmond and, uh, La Sainte Ville, Modoc, Muncie. There were people from all over to, to, to be the first in line at this, uh, grand opening. I've, uh, I've taken the advice of, uh, your president, Barton Barker, who has, uh, given me some wise counsel. Uh, I attended the Association of Counties, uh, meeting with the Indiana Economic Development Association, uh, not the corporation, it's a different group. It was very enlightening, it was very good. Also, uh, Barton has counseled me to attend the Ball State, uh, two-day training, uh, for the, uh, I'm having a blank spider, for community development, which was very good. Something that we, uh, as a county and a city, uh, need to be involved with. One of the things I attended last night for about two hours in Richmond was this, uh, Whitewater Canal scenic byway, which will bless Connersville as this thing comes to fruition. I know that, uh, the grant that's been, been written and the work that, uh, Connerville, Connersville been doing was recognized last night in this meeting in Richmond, that we have really, um, rose to the occasion to help out with the grant. And then I believe with Connersville and its, uh, unique position with a railroad that goes to Metamore, and Metamore being the only working part of the Whitewater Canal that's, uh, in business, that has just a lot of rich, uh, assets from a tourist standpoint, I really believe that when this is, uh, completed, there'll be huge opportunities for Connersville to reap some nice benefits from this project that is still in kind of the planning stage. But, uh, there's about six counties, starting from Hagerstown that goes all the way to Cincinnati and a little bit of Ohio. And they're all together and, and we're part of that. And ultimately, this will be a, a nice, a nice little addition for Connersville because we have the Canal House, we have, uh, a rich history involving the Whitewater Valley, uh, Whitewater Valley and, and the canal. So, uh, that's just a, a brief report of where I'm at, what I'm doing, uh, some of the things that I, I can talk about. I appreciate county and their, uh, support of economic development. It, uh, it means a lot. Economic development is truly the, uh, lubricant that oils the wheels of progress for our city and county. And all the other counties in Indiana, with few exceptions, have very strong economic development, uh, organizations. They're well-funded, uh, they're well-organized, they want all the business that they can get and so do we. And so your support, your continued support, uh, into the future is very, very important and I certainly appreciate it. I know the board, uh, that I work for appreciates, appreciates it as well. That's all I have to say. You have any questions for me?
No, sir. Appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for everything that you've done. We appreciate it.
You bet.
Thank you, Dan.
You bet.
Thank you, everybody. Knows my position on the, on the EDG Board and Economic Development, the financial straits we're in. The only way we're gonna get out of it is to get new jobs and more assessment in here. So I, I, you know, if, if that's not successful, we're not gonna be successful. We have a, um, a letter here from Frontier, which I'll pass along to you, Chris, which is notice of claim, claiming that the Highway Department, uh, dug in and damaged a twelve pair, uh, buried Frontier cable, so they'd like for us to pay for that. Jay, Jay don't think we, we had anything to do with that, but, uh, I'll pass this on to you and you, uh... Jay, Jay will see what he can find out and let you know and then you can take care of that for us.
I have something to...
You got any other mail?
Um, yes. I received, um, a notice of a tort claim in the mail and, um, it is, um, states that Beverly A. Jarrett intends to take legal action to claim compensation from Fayette, Fayette County. It was for damages or loss suffered based on an accident at, was that the, um, at the bypass, I, I believe that's where.
That's been out there on one, one bypass.
Yeah, Veterans Memorial on one twenty-one.
I got one and two, but that shouldn't have anything to do with us.
I know. But we did receive the notice of tort claim and, um, then we received, uh, notice from our insurance carrier that they have assigned, uh, a claim handler to that. So I just thought I'd put that in the minutes.
So when did that happen?
It was just an accident that happened.
Yeah, it was just an accident happened in the intersection right there.
March eighteenth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so they just, to everybody, I guess, open?
When you file a tort claim, you...
Get everybody that might have some money.
Yeah.
They have to give six months' notice with a tort claim, but you said the insurance already has a copy of it?
Yeah, they have, yeah, and they have a claim handler assigned to it. That's just, you know...
I'm not, did you get one? Who, who is named on that?
We must just give it to Chris.
Yeah, yeah, well, I, yeah, he, I guess he can, that's the one that came in the mail.
Is that an old, is that an old mail?
I think that's...
Okay, then we're going to an old business. Uh, contract with Snyder and Beacon Systems. Andrew Harrison.
He just, he just stepped out the door for a second, just two seconds.
Well, we'll go on to the next and get back to him. New bid at Centerstone, Thelma Chandler?
Uh-huh. Just a quick report of outline, what I'm gonna talk about. Okay. Uh-huh. Thank you. There you go. There you go. Uh-huh. Uh, I am Thelma Chandler from Centerstone Regional Clinic Director for the East Region and, uh, here to report, uh, to be accountable for the funds that you guys provide to us here at Centerstone. As you can see on the outline, we've served about, um, almost sixteen hundred consumers here in the Fayette County. Uh, the income level served here in Fayette, as you can see, ninety, ninety percent of the family that we have served is two, is under two hundred percent of poverty. What that means is that they cannot afford to pay for a fee. For an example, if an intake for an assessment, for a mental health assessment, the cost is a hundred and twenty dollars, but a person with sliding scale fee will only pay twenty dollars. Uh, and we also offer, uh, limited scholarship because many people in the community just can't afford to pay for the services. Um, we don't turn anyone around. Uh, we help use county funds to help offset that. Uh, without those county funds, we will, we, we won't be able to serve all the clients that come through Centerstone. Some of the services here, uh, that I wanna highlight, um, that's really strong in this community is home-based services. And this is where, uh, families, um, you have someone with mental health that actually go into the homes and work with the families. Work, uh, also we have, they work with schools here in, uh, Fayette County as well. One of the newest services is services for the military. And as you know, uh, our military are coming back and they are suffering, will suffer them such as PTSD, um, jobs, and we're very much, um, looking, we're assessing for veterans that come to us. If they cannot afford to pay for our services, we offer some free sessions. Uh, if they need, uh, additional sessions, there's a very small copay. We have, uh, attained a grant and donations, um, to help provide services to our veterans. And many of our veterans, um, will not seek mental health assessment because of the stigma and also because they don't want the information to get back to their, um, reporting unit. And so these services are confidential. If they have insurance, if they don't feel comfortable, uh, billing their insurance, we can still give them some free sessions. So if you know of anyone, military, send them to our clinic here in our Fayette County. Um, we're very involved in the community. Uh, as you know, we're Community Mental Health Center and we address, you know, depression, anxiety, marriage issues, things that's listed on my, on the outline. What's important is, uh, the tax revenue that we receive from Fayette County is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. Uh, the cost of that value, uh, based on people with no insurance, no financial resources and sliding scale fee, it costs us, Centerstone, it's almost three hundred thousand dollars. So it's, for what you get, for the funds that you give us, we're giving a lot back to the community. The people that we employ here, uh, in, um, Fayette County for their salary, fringe benefit, operation expense, it's a little over two million dollars. You guys have any questions about the funds, about services that we offer?
Do you guys accept, you know, like Medicaid or, and that's, and do you work with the Veterans Affairs Officer for Fayette County to tell him that you're open for, to help veterans?
Yes, we, uh, are beginning to get the word out to all of our Keshman areas and we recently, uh, just recently, we had four veterans to come in that's actually receiving the free sessions. They can get four session free if they may need medication. Uh, that's also included, they can get a med evaluation, 'cause many times they, a lot of them need the medication, if there's substance abuse treatment, we make sure we connect them. We'll try to get it paid for, if not, we'll make sure we get them sliding scale fee for those services. But the free services is, uh, individual counseling, med evaluation, order med appointments to kind of get them connected back in the community. We also, uh, the services are also free for their family members as well, because a lot of times it's the family members that suffer in silence.
I'm familiar with your services. I was, I'm a retired police officer and my daughter works for you.
Who's your daughter?
Megan.
Oh, okay. Oh, she's awesome.
You guys do, you guys do a fantastic job.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, is there any other question that you guys might have?
Okay.
Okay, um, from Centerstone, we wanna thank you for the funding. Without the funding, we wouldn't be able to provide as many services, but we definitely wouldn't turn anyone around. And it's excellent to hear that you have someone that's bringing new jobs to the community. And the reason why they come to Community Mental Health Center, because of your funding is important, it becomes people, the stress, the stress related and people, it's, it's great that you have us here to assist with those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I see Andrea's back, so we'll...
Two seconds after you walked out the door.
You just about got left out. So you, Chris, you, you reviewed the contract with, uh...
We're talking about Snyder?
Snyder.
Yes, I did.
Okay, I, it's okay.
And everything is fine?
I, I will say that, um, Andrew Harrison, who is a Connersville native, uh, he came in and gave a demo of the Beacon and, um, I think the treasurer was here and Kathy Rhodes, the assessor, and Warren, uh, sat in on that. Warren set off the surveyor. And, uh, we were, and then, um, I know, uh, Barton has worked with, uh, when, in his appraisal service, when he's worked in properties and other...
he's worked in properties in other counties that do have Beacon, and we were all very impressed by Beacon as compared to, to what we currently have. Um, and it wouldn't replace, replace our GIS system, that remains in place, they just take the information from that, and then, uh, taxes will be available on there, and along with, uh, the property record card, uh, that we currently have, um, and just a lot of information and much handier to use, user-friendly format, and, um, Andrew assures me that we are getting the Fayette County discount, and it's actually the same price as what we have now, so it won't be any increase in price, and this will go into place in November, I think it is, when, um, our annual contract is up with, uh, WTH for that. So it's not gonna affect the GIS, but would be put in place if their web-based, um, service.
Did we already approve that contract subject to Snyder?
That's a very good question, I'm very glad you asked that.
I don't think we did.
I, 'cause I don't know that we had a, I don't know that we had a price at the time, to be true.
Right, we're okay.
Yeah.
And, and we have a contract for these services put in online with, uh, with WTH, and that's not gonna affect, we can get out of that without losing the other services that we get from WTH?
I believe she figured, yeah.
I believe so, it's a, it's a whole separate contract, and we pay them separately for that, separate from the...
And we've written this so that it doesn't, there's no double billing, so it doesn't start billing until December.
My, my, my only concern was that if we did this, that they would say, that they would drop us on, on the whole thing, and, and we need the GIS in order to get...
Yeah, I haven't seen that anywhere else, so I couldn't, just leave that.
You've done other communities that had WTH.
It is, it is a lot more, um, user-friendly than, and more information than what we get with, with our present system, so, um, I would suggest that we go ahead and approve the contract and get Beacon onboard.
So moved.
Second.
Then moved, second, we approve the contract with Beacon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Andrew, if, once we do this, I think it would be helpful if you could have a, um, training session, so to speak, with the realtors, the abstractors, the secretaries and attorney's office and stuff, so they could, uh, have a shorter learning curve and learn what all that they can get out of this. Could we do that?
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea, so we'll, we'll plan for that and just do a, maybe two or three sessions through the day, somewhere here in the, in the county, and just bring everybody in.
Right, I, I think that'd be, I think that'd be great, because, you know, it's, there's a little bit of learning curve to everything, everything you do, and you can just give everybody a jump start.
Right, right.
And it's, uh, a lot of, a lot of people, a lot of people use it, you know, it's a whole lot of Andrew that come down to courthouse and try and dig out the information, bothering these people, and that'd be great.
Economic development stuff we were talking about earlier, too, so.
Right.
You could probably use our conference room to, uh, coordinate with Debbie.
Okay.
Make sure prosecutor, prosecutor uses it sometime, if they're not using it, they should be...
You could have, you could have two or three sessions during the day, or one big session, or whatever, whatever.
We could use this room and did like we did before.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate you, you could do that.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, guys. The library board appointment. Mr., uh, Stevens' appointment is, is up on the library board, he wishes, my understanding, that he wishes to remain on there, and the library board would like to see him stay, so, um, it's up to the wishes of the commissioners if you want to reappoint Mr. Stevens to that board.
Moved to reappoint Mr. Mike Stevens to the Beacon position on the library board.
Second.
Then moved, second, we approve, reappoint Mike Stevens to the library board, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is Martin Whisker on the satellite mineral storage.
He's not here.
He's not here?
Ma, M.A. H. Jones.
Huh?
It's Ma, M.A. H. Jones.
Is it Ma, okay, well, at any rate, Mr. Whisker's not here.
Okay.
Diane Grant, Diane Wright.
Diane Grant with the right, right.
Yeah.
Okay, which one are we doing first?
Approval, my, my agenda says approval of archival assessment digitization.
Oh, this is the other one.
Digitization grant.
Um, I'm here for Ann Frost, we are going to apply, we would like permission to apply for, um, a grant to digitize, and she has five books that are in, um, five of her oldest deed books that are in need of repair, and what they will do, they will digitize them, repair the books. We are in the process of getting quotes, she said her, um...
What was she here about last month about equipment for digits, digitization? I can't say.
I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't, she didn't tell me about that, and Ann's on vacation, so, um...
But this is a...
Well, she wanted a microfilm reader printer, replacing her microfilm. Okay.
But this is for a service to do that?
This is for a service, um, we will get a quote from three companies, I only have one quote in so far. The grant is for five thousand dollars, so she's in, um, I hate to tell the price, because that's not fair to the, the first group that's already given their quote.
No.
Um, but, um, she will take those out of her, um, her, um, fund that she has there, and it just, I just lost...
Recorders perpetuation.
Yes, the perpetuation fund, yes.
Okay.
Her matching funds out of that, but the commissioner does have to sign off on this, so we need commissioner's approval.
Digital approval to apply for the grant.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, I, I would recommend we do that.
So moved.
Second.
Then moved, second, that they, we approve, uh, applying for the grant, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Um, the first quote that we did receive, they did tell us that the books will stay here in Indiana and do the work, they won't be shipped clear across country, um, and that is one of the things that we're looking at, at the possibility of not having to shift the books, because they are in such frail condition.
They will stay, they will stay here?
Stay in Indiana and not be shipped to some other state.
But they will take them somewhere else.
But they will have to go offsite for a while, yes, for the repair.
Who, where's this grant from?
Um, it is from the Indiana State Historic Records Advisory Board.
Is there any chance to get the grant, do all of that stuff we have in the basement, the courthouse down there, it's getting, it's getting...
Wow.
But, but, I mean, it's not a funny matter, we've got, we've got a, a lot of records down there that's getting, that's getting ruined.
They offer this every year, you know, and, and like I said, the med sum you can get on this is five thousand dollars, and it's quite expensive. She's gonna match plus.
So it's basically like around a thousand dollars a book to do it? I mean, if it's five thousand and you're looking at five of the oldest...
She's doing five books, so it's two thousand dollars plus per book.
What, what is that, is it, um, uh, the matching is fifty percent or what?
At least, yes, you have to match, dollar for dollar, so...
But he's, he's right, that stuff in that basement, I mean, it's getting destroyed.
Yeah.
A lot of my grant information been in City Hall.
Okay, what's next?
Um, I actually also have the resolution for the housing grant, um, as you all know, we were awarded seventy-five percent of that, um, what we asked for. We received two hundred and six thousand, um, two hundred and fifty dollars, and, um, I have given everybody a copy of the resolution, and that is all we have to do to it, to, is sign the resolution, and we can move forward, get that paperwork turned in.
Have you all finished the resolution?
One of those is the official copy, Debbie.
Mm-hmm.
And Chris has reviewed the contract, I should say.
Pardon?
Chris has reviewed the contract, I did, did get that done.
Yes, I have.
It's a long one. Well, then we need a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Then moved, same, we approve the resolution, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
Thank you, ma'am. At least we could, uh, put a little surprise in here, too.
Yeah, sure.
Next item on the agenda is the food pantry, Zane's gonna speak to that.
Um, gentlemen, you wanna stay there, you wanna come up here, or whichever?
Where we go.
Um, we've come to the end of the road, um, we're, we're pretty much out of time. Um, I've done a lot of running, done a lot of talking, Granby Pharmacy offered, um, we put out a thing in the paper, the newspaper, uh, Granby Pharmacy called and showed interest in the food pantry, uh, Fayette County Regional, or Fayette Memorial Hospital called, uh, Steve Kreider had called and said they had interest in it. Um, quite frankly, we've gotta make a decision to move probation, and we've individually thought about it, I know where I stand on trying to save the county money and taxpayer money, uh, with the other building, the old annex, um, plus, uh, probation's adult and juvenile probation has to be separated by, by state, uh, led, uh, by the state saying they have to be separated, they can't be together, and right now they are together. So with that said, probation, uh, we think it's a better fit to move them to that, to that other side. So with that said, um, I talked to, um, Mark Pryfogle, he's the CEO of Granby Pharmacy, uh, they still show interest in the food pantry, I talked to Steve Kreider with the hospital, he said he still shows interest with the food pantry. With that said, um, I did talk to you gentlemen way back when, in the beginning, and I said, I don't, personally, I don't wanna get to June and still be doing this, and we're at the end of May, we're coming into June. We're still willing to offer our services in the event that something is found with community corrections to help move, um, but we're gonna need this space as soon as possible. Sixty-two days from today is July twenty-first, and that's gonna be my motion today, is that by June, or July twenty-first, which would be sixty-two days from today, that you guys have found a new place, it's nothing personal, it's something we have to do, we don't, we will hit every angle with this. Um, I know the food pantry works hard to help feed the community, they do a great job, and there are still a lot of people out there that wanna help the food pantry relocate, find a new home, offer them space, and, uh, quite frankly, uh, when we put the letter out there in the newspaper, it was well-received, there were people out there that really, and I know that with, with Granby Pharmacy, I know that some of the space was a little difficult at the actual pharmacy, I'd actually seen it, um, but then they had another space over in the Eldridge Building, which was the entire warehouse. Um, I can't micromanage the food pantry, I, I can't, I have to do this job. So with that said, um, I'll still, I'm still willing to offer community corrections if the other two commissioners are okay with that, in the event that you guys do find that, but we're gonna need the space within sixty-two days, and that's my motion to have that space freed up within sixty-two days from today, which would be July twenty-first.
Can we second that motion?
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded, that, uh, the food pantry moved by the twenty-first of...
July.
July. Is there any discussion with food pantry people, we should make any comments before we vote on this?
I don't know that there's anything to be said since you've pretty much already made your decision, um, we don't quite understand the reasoning yet exactly why we have to move, is that a legitimate question at this time?
Yeah, the, the reason is, is because we need the space, we have to have it, and we're gonna, there, there's, and I don't, I mean, to get down to the logistics of it, the old building that probation is in right now is, number one, it's not, it's not safe, it's old, it's not even fundamentally, fundamentally, uh, uh, it's hard to heat, it's hard to cool, it's like a screen door on the front of a house that never closes. Um, the other issue is with the offices upstairs, it's a safety issue within close proximity to probationees and people who get, they need more space, and that's not their request, that was me going to them saying, looking at the building, probation had nothing to do with this, this was not something they wanted, this is something that when we got to talking about it, uh, at the beginning of the year, um, it seemed like a good fit to move them over there. If there was ever a fire in the basement or in the, the first floor of that building, anyone on the third floor's gonna have to jump out the window, there's no way out of that building. So we have to close that building and use it for storage or what, whatever the case may be. Moving probation to the newer part spreads everybody out, gives them more space. Also, economically, heating the building and cooling the building that they're in is costing us a boatload of money, and I've talked to council members that said they dug into it, and we can save as much as ten to twelve thousand dollars a year just closing that one building and not using it. It's nothing personal towards the food pantry, I think you guys are a great entity, and I, I commend what you've done, but at the end of the day, we're elected to protect taxpayers' dollars, and we're, we're spinning our wheels because we're spending money we shouldn't be spending. So at the end of the day, is close the other building down, move them over there that's more efficient because it was built at a later date, and Steve Kreider at the Fayette Memorial Hospital is still, wants to talk to you, and have you guys come down and talk with him, and, uh, Mark Pryfogle of Granby Pharmacy said the offer's still open, and they'll talk to you, um, as far as what you need. And like I said, in the event that if you move piece by piece or little by little, all you gotta do is call me, and we'll get with community corrections, and we'll move this stuff wherever you want it to go. It's not like we're just saying, hey, get out, see ya, bye, it's not our problem, that's not my wishes, I wanna help you relocate somewheres else and, and make it a happy fit, but this has to be done, and it's a decision that has to be made, and I wanna help you make the transition. Um, I just think that if we keep going, nothing's gonna happen, and it'll be the end of the year, and next year, and we're still doing it, and we got, we gotta move on this, and we gotta do it as soon as we can. Um, you know, honestly, if we get to July twenty-first and there's one refrigerator left, I'm not gonna throw a fit, we'll, we'll get it moved, but we need to try to get that done as soon as possible, and I don't want any sore feelings, I don't want anybody upset about it, it's just change, change is something that has to happen to grow, and we're not, we're not, we're, we've gotta get this done, and I think it's important as a commissioner to do this and change the facility and move probation from where they are to where they need to be. And, you know, you guys have been there for a while, how long have you been there?
About one minute, seven, eight years, we crossed a, uh, alley there for longer than that.
And, you know, I can't commit, you know, to, to anything, but I've talked to other officials all the way up to the mayor, and they're supportive of your program, and they're willing to help any way possible later on down the road if need be. I don't know what that's, help will be, it'll be monetary or help with services and moving stuff, but at the present day, it's, it's gotta be done, and we don't have a choice, that's, that's why I need to get it done as soon as possible. We've been cleaning that whole annex out, the whole building, we've been cleaning this building out, cleaning offices out and emptying them out, and we just, probation is so big, people, I don't think they realize how many offices that one department needs on its own, and, you know, you can't be across the hall with an adult and then across the hall with a juvenile and be talking about, that's a violation of state law, you can't do it, because the half juvenile cases are private, they're not allowed to be... not allowed to be public.
I appreciate the offer to help us move when that comes down the road. That is a concern because we have aging group of volunteers, as you can see, and that would be much appreciated. And I guess I understand the answer to my question.
We'll also use, you know, if it comes down to it, we can use the community corrections van to move refrigerators and the county truck, if the other two commissioners are okay with that, to move other stuff, you know, I mean...
We'll use whatever equipment we have to help you.
Can you tell us about those people that have offered their locations for you?
Which people? I've talked to Ramby Pharmacy people.
Okay. And Steve Kreider at the hospital.
I have not. I was waiting for a phone call from Zane. I thought he told me that he would call me and set up an appointment. I haven't heard from him.
Okay. Well, either it was just, it got lost, but we still had, he is still, he still wants to sit down and talk with the food pantry. So if I can set up, or if you go, want to go ahead and talk to him, if you call the hospital and ask for Steve Kreider, I'll give you his number or I'll drop it off or whichever.
Okay.
He said he really wants to sit down and talk. He said there's some space available for the hospital and Dr. White, or Dr. White, Mr. White, the CEO of, of the hospital says he's all, all in favor of helping the food pantry find a place as well.
Okay. All right, we'll go from there.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
We do have a motion on, on the floor to require the food pantry to live by the 21st of July. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we need to talk about the, a part-time employee for area planning. Bill McDaniel, the director of area planning, had fell last week, bunged up his knee and his ankle. He has been home. He was here this morning. He is going to be able to spend some time in, in the office, but he does have a problem that he can't drive and get out and do inspections. Yesterday alone, I had four different people call up and want to know how they're going to get their inspections done. The, the council took away, didn't, took away the funding for the, for the assistant that Bill had down there a year ago, so we're going to have to find some way to get our inspections done. We can't just, we can't just shut the area planning office, make them go out of business when we have one man get, where he can't go out and perform the job. The, I've talked to Debbie and it seems to me that the best solution to this, Bill does have a person who he's comfortable with going out and doing inspections and report back to him on a case-by-case deal. And what, what I'm suggesting is that we contract with this individual on a, like I say, on a, on a case-by-case deal on a, on an hourly, hourly wage, so we won't, we won't have to get a judicial appropriation from the council or put another line item in, which we definitely special need to do if we did that. So that, that would be my suggestion that we authorize Bill to, to hire this person who can do the inspections on a case-by-case deal at, I think he said $10 an hour, that the man would, the man would perform these tasks.
We'd pay that contractual services.
We'd pay, we could pay that out of contractual services.
I think, I think that makes sense. He can't do it. It needs to be done. He's got someone who recommends. $10 an hour is very reasonable. If we contract with him, I think that's my, in fact, you need a motion to that back.
Yes, we do.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we contract with the gentleman recommended by Bill McDaniel to do the onsite inspections at the dollar rate that he recommended.
I know Bill would, I know Mr. McDaniel would pick a person that could do the job, so I think, I feel safe with this, so I'll second that motion.
Been moved and seconded that we approve hiring on a contractual basis, a person to do the inspections while Bill is not able to drive and go out and do them. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The last item on the agenda, I really hate to bring up. We have, I have a letter here from Jay Havlin, the Highway Superintendent, who for personal reasons has decided to retire. The letter states that he's going to be retiring as of August the 8th. With that, with that said, we need to, I think we need to get busy to try and find a replacement for him. It's going to take a while. I think we should advertise for applicants and probably... We need to have them in by, at least by the first of June.
It's the 20th. Is my time to get it advertised?
That would give us...
If I send it over to be advertised today, it wouldn't be in the paper until Tuesday, Thursday. So that'd be what, the 22nd? It'd be, and, that'd be given. When is your, when is your next meeting?
The next meeting will be the...
Third.
Third.
Is that when you want them due by or you want them due by the day before?
And if, if we waited to, if we waited to our second meeting, that would be, that would be the...
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
That's probably, that's probably better because people may not see it in the paper and lots of things here on the word of mouth.
That gives you two weeks. That gives you two weeks to get something to honor.
Two extra weeks.
He's not leaving till August, or is he taking vacation?
Will you be here till then?
Yes.
Jay, you're not, you're not taking vacations?
No, I'll, I figured Kathy said she could pay the vacation out in the end, so.
His vacation, they paid her last year.
Okay, okay. So you will. Well, then, then we could, we could wait till the 17th.
Sixteenth. Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. The seventeenth will be our second meeting.
Okay.
Let's have, let's have them in by this.
The day before, the 16th, day before the meeting, so you'll have a chance to get your copies.
Well, but then you're, you're going to have to interview all of these people.
Ms. President?
Yes.
Why don't we, why don't we have an executive session that day to interview them that day?
Well, yeah, but you'll probably want to review. You may get a stack of them. You're not going to probably interview everyone.
Okay.
Well...
Let's, let's, let's have the applications in by the 10th. You can, you can put the applications in the, in the commissioner's box and we'll have till the 17th to...
Review them.
To review them.
Okay, and then set an executive system, session after that.
Right.
Go ahead.
Right.
Okay, you let me know when you want to do that.
Right, that motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Frank made a motion to advertise for applicants.
Oh, second, sorry.
All in favor of advertising for applicants for Highway Supervisor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Jay, thanks for your service. We appreciate it.
Well, I enjoy working with people who are related to county system. I just hate to have to go, but before you leave, I have to go.
We understand.
We understand that, Jay. That's the end of the items I have on the agenda. Is there any patrons' concerns?
I think we have any patrons.
Well, we've just about brought them all off. If not, we need approval for the claims of the payroll.
Moved to approve claims and payroll.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the claims and the payroll. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Just a time out, entertain motion to adjourn.
So moved.
If they move and seconded, this meeting be adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Meeting adjourned.